All right, well, it's seven o'clock, so we will call to order this regular meeting of the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission for January 4th. Happy New Year, everybody. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Happy New Year. Burgess?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
DeSenzo? Harrison? Milliken?
Here.
Patelco?
Here.
Pitts? And Swan.
All right, thank you. We have an agenda that was sent to us. Are there any changes or modifications to the agenda?
There are no changes, but I was informed that Commissioner Prudell will not be in attendance tonight.
Okay, thanks for that heads up. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Burgess. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Patelco. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. We also received minutes from the December 7th, 2023 meeting. Any comments, changes, questions about those minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chambers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Any communications and announcements?
Um, no, sir, no communications or announcements.
All right, great. Then we'll move into public hearings. We have four public hearings tonight, so buckle up. As a reminder, with public hearings, we'll have a chance for public comment. We'll ask when public comment comes that you come forward, state your name and your address, and then you'll have three minutes to give your comments. We'll also ask that you write your name on the little pad that's up there as well to make sure we get that right in the minutes. We'll also be taking public comments for those watching online via call-in when we conclude the comments from the folks in the audience. That number is 888-382-9556. And just a reminder, we'll take comments on the items germane to that hearing, and if you have comments on non-agenda items, we'll have a public comment period later in the agenda for those items. So with all that being said, we'll start with PC 2024.01, the vacation of a 234-foot-long segment of public right-of-way lying between West Street and Cooley Street in the downtown neighborhood.
Thank you, Chair Milliken. As you mentioned, there's two applications to vacate streets in front of you tonight, the first one being an alleyway. These are a little bit different than the Eleanor and Cooley Street, which were open, in-place roads, that we knew that there were roads there. And you may, I believe Commissioner DeSenzo noted in that review that there was a mention of these, but staff was doing some research to see if we could find out when these were vacated. We didn't find anything of the sort, and out of an abundance of caution, the applicant is seeking to clear the record by going through the motions and processes. I understand that they will eventually move this on to Circuit Court, which is an even higher level of vacating the road, so all of this would be necessary. And in each instance, each road is within property today that is enclosed by legal description and is recognized as parcels. I will touch on that through the presentation here. I think to help explain this for the commission and the public at large, in some sense, how things like this come to be is pretty typical for an old part of town like this. The plat up there is, I believe it was in 1847, it's the town of Kalamazoo. Like, when you see a new development today, somebody surveys it, and there's all sorts of detail and all sorts of things you have to do. In 1847, things were a little bit simpler. You could basically draw it up, record it at the office, and you're good to go. And this plat, which is the one on the books, as you say, today, was actually the fourth one. If you look back far enough, goes back to the early 1830s, the city grew out from portage in Michigan, where this was the biggest one. So you can see in the southeast corner there, some marshes. You see why Spring Street was called Spring, because there was a spring over there. South Street, our level is called Love Street. You can see South Street down there, North Street. And the western edge there is what was called West Street, which is now known as Westnidge Avenue, named after a World War I soldier from the city. And you can even tell on these old plats, if you follow West Street enough, you start to get some unnamed lots. The line just doesn't really seem to make much sense. You can see that further. When you zoom in here, you can see the original run of Arcadia Creek there, and we're focusing in on Block 1 in the southwest corner. You can see how it just kind of closes there. That was West Street. And I recognize there's a lot of activity going on within these four blocks of where the arena is eventually proposed, and there's been a number of street vacations that have occurred in recent years. So like, when I mentioned Cooley Street, Cooley Street on paper does not exist anymore, even though the road itself is still there. So I put together this diagram to show what has happened. So an orange in the southeast corner there is an alley segment in another block that went through the process and was vacated in 2018, went to City Commission, and that shows up in the surveys within the documents. The purple segment there is the portion of Cooley Street that was vacated in 2022. There was a former development there proposed, and they vacated that section of Cooley at that time, and there's easements that run over where that runs today. And the green segment is the recently vacated by commission just last month, Eleanor Street and Cooley Street, where you can see the intent here is to assemble this land for a square there. And the first item there in the southwest corner, the blue are the two in front of us tonight, the alley as-platted. It shows up in the surveys there as a dash line, and there's a busy lot to read there. So this is the highlight, A, to show that this alley is, appears to be where they decided to put the creek when they modified it all in the early 90s. And West Street is within those parcels to the west. You can see the former funeral home was within it, and then even if you go south of water, you'll see that the furniture store goes right up to it. So even in staff's research, we found evidence that buildings had been put there a while, they've been taxed, parcels. In the legal descriptions, use language of West Street and the now Westnidge Avenue, or the current West Street. So all of that showed us, this is just some murky title. And to get a little closer at this alley to help explain the request, here's the surveys provided, unmodified. The dark line is property lines, and you can see those dash lines there are the original plat, what's kind of sitting under there, where the lot lines have moved all over the years. And one more here, I highlighted exactly where the alley is. You can see the dash there. And a portion of CD Arena's property, you can see the little dark line across the top is theirs, and the rest of it, the creek, not the whole creek, is part of a parcel called 235 Cooley Street, which is owned by the DDA. So the land area is already owned, there's no proposal to change property lines, but that helps narrow down where are we at and what are we talking about. Here, you can see is a view of the alley looking east. I'm in Cooley Street, and if you go out there and look closely, you can find a couple of nails in the ground with some pink ribbon around them. That's where the surveyor marked it. So just a little bit on the left side of there is the north end of the alley, and then running in the middle of the creek is the south end of the alley. And you'll see the KRVT trail there. That is within the property, within an easement. This action does not impact an easement. An easement, for those that may not know, is something with the property that runs with it that gives somebody access. So the public can go through there through that easement. And one more here is back on the other side of that alley looking towards the west. And again, on your right there is the north edge of the alley, and the south end is there within the creek. Here, then now here's a few photos to highlight the land use in the aerial. You can see 235 Cooley, the majority of it in the parcel. The aqua blue line there is the alley where it lies. The current zoning of the property, it is all Zone D2. The, obviously, records take time to catch up. You can still see the roads are on our maps. And I thought I should mention as well, you'll notice one portion of the land area is D3, but at the event of this, once these parcels are all combined, the majority land area becomes the zoning, and D2 zone permits the use, and all of that a little bit further down the road. Here is the current land use. Again, the vacant parcels to the south, the parcel to the north is now vacant, and the recently demolished funeral home. So a lot within that block is currently vacant now, even though the land use map may not show it. And again, that aqua blue line is the alleyway, and the future land use is here showing that this and everything around it is proposed to be in the D2 zone, or the downtown zoning, if you will. So with all of that background, the street vacation is not contained within the zoning ordinance, it's within a City Commission adopted policy, and within that policy are the criteria that these requests are evaluated. One is, is the right-of-way unimproved? And this is an unimproved road. An unimproved road could be something that was platted or laid out and never actually constructed, or in an instance like this, the road is known to exist and has unclear title. The most recent one that would have appeared in front of this body would have been, a segment of Garden Street exists in the Edison Street, used to exist in the Edison School campus, but to clear up the title, they decided to move forward and vacate it. The right-of-way is improved, but sees limited use by the public. A parallel route in proximity exists. This, again, is not applicable, because the alley's not there, the right-of-way is not improved. However, there are easements for the KRVT trail on the north side of the alley. There's also some that you'll see that come adjacent, where the creek comes in underground. None of those are impacted by this action. Vacational right-of-way would not impede access to any other adjacent property owner to their property. Again, this will not apply, because CD Arena has frontage on Westnidge and Water Street, and the DDA would have frontage along Westnidge Avenue, and they have access through an easement through the former Cooley Street up from the south of Water Street to get to the creek and maintain what they have within that easement in their property. All adjacent property owners to the right-of-way must indicate their support of their request in writing. In this instance, since the DDA is not an individual, the body had to vote and provide a decision on that, and they provided a resolution. I thought a very well-researched one, that kind of gave some context of, and history of how this got there. So that was a secondary part to the delay, where until we had the DDA consent, we couldn't move this forward, because an impacted property owner had not given their support of it. And that meeting happened on November 20th, 2023, and the resolution is within the staff report as well. Consideration five is that the vacation will not impede the city in meeting its transportation goals. It will not. Again, there is no vehicular traffic, and for the east-west pedestrian connection, we have the easement that shows up on the surveys and is recognized and in place. The vacation will not impact existing or planned utilities within the right-of-way. There are no utilities within the platted alley, and the creek itself is a water of the state. You can't really stop a water body from flowing anyways. This decision wouldn't impact that, or have any impact on it. And lastly, vacation will not impact the work of the Department of Public Safety or Public Services Department. This will not, because it's already a known quantity in place, and at the time of application to develop the arena and the proximity to this location, there's site plan review and any number of plan reviews that occur. This doesn't include any of that, but I figure is a concern, it's worth mentioning that. I have both set up. I'll just do the second one after the vote is made on this. If there's any questions, and there is a representative from CD Arena here as well.
Great, thank you. Any technical questions for staff at this moment? All right, seeing none, we'll hear from the applicant.
My name is Jordan Shaw. I'm an attorney representing CD Arena, the applicant. We have offices at 350 East Michigan Avenue. As Bobby's explained, this is really, this application involves cleaning up title. It has to do with the creek and the former West Street. I don't think Bobby mentioned, but that what was West Street, the reason it's no longer a road is because at some point in history, Westnidge was moved to the west, and there's a jog there. When you're coming north, it jogs over. But so that's been part, so that land is owned by CD Arena now, and, but because there's still this kind of historical remnant of it being West Street, that we just need that cleaned up. Similarly, for the creek, the east block of the creek had been previously vacated. You know, Bobby referenced it as an alley. It used to be an alley. Now it's just, it was opened up, and it's the creek. And for some reason, the east block between Park and Cooley was vacated, and ownership was transferred to the DDA and to the adjacent landowners. But for some reason, the west block, maybe at the time the developer wasn't interested in that, but that wasn't done. So again, that's just a, an effort to kind of clean that up a little bit. Bobby mentioned that we need to go through a Circuit Court action to complete the vacation, and part of that process is to amend the city plat map to reflect these changes. And so, since we're doing that process in connection with Eleanor and Cooley Streets, we don't really want to leave these things hanging out there, and so it makes sense to do it all at the same time.
Great, thank you.
I'm just Pete Mitchell with Rockford Construction, who are the owner's rep for CD Arena.
Awesome. Thanks. After public comments, if we have any questions, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll open it up, the public hearing. If anyone has any public comments on this, please come forward, and again, state your name and address, and we'll hear from you. Seeing none, is there anyone online? Nope. Okay. Well, then we will close the public hearing. Are there any procedural or technical questions, or questions for the applicant at this moment, before we get a motion to open discussion? If not, then I will take a motion. This is a recommendation. We recommend an action to the City Commission on this. So I'll need a recommendation to approve the vacation of the 234-foot-long segment of unimproved right-of-way between West Street, as-platted, and Cooley Street vacated. So if someone wants to make that motion?
I would do that. I will move that we, that the Planning Commission make a positive recommendation of the City Council, or Commission, to vacate the section we're discussing here.
Is there a second, or, yeah, second for that motion?
I will second.
We have a motion by Burgess, second by Curtis. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Well, I would just say that the case is clear. We're clearing up something that's, just to make sure everything's appropriate, and the findings, as Bobby walked us through, seemed to fit, and it just makes sense.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I'll just say I appreciate the diligence that City Staff, and also the DDA and everyone's having to go through to make sure this is, this is clean and clear.
Thanks. Yeah, I find it's consistent with the vacation policy and with our previous actions of the city as well. So seeing no other comments or questions, can we get a roll call vote?
Let's see. Burgess?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Harrison? Patelco?
Yes.
Milliken?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Pitts?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah. All right. So then, we'll move right into PC 2024.02, vacating a segment of unimproved West Street as-platted, lying east of the northwest Westnidge Avenue, right-of-way between West Kalamazoo Avenue and West Water Street. I guess, Bobby, any new details or?
No, not, not really. I have the same image I showed earlier, showing a little bit of the close-up of the southwest parcel. You can see where the surveyor calls out West Street, showing it contained within the parcel. Again, a little bit of 235 Cooley, the DDA parcel is just to the north of there, within West Street. So they had a little bit of an interest in West Street as well. Again, showing that dashed line. You can see it along the left side of there. That angle there in the property is whenever they widened the road in the 60s, but you can see how West Street's kind of just hanging out under there still. If you look closely, you'll see the easement for Arcadia Creek, where it comes in underground there. And a couple of views here to highlight. It's a little hard to see. Right there by that first dash line, there's that pink flagging under the nail to show West Street. West Street is about 33 feet to the east there, so it's the 33-foot-wide swath, which, again, would include that building. You can see that it's within the KRVT trail there. Here's another one, kind of standing within West Street. Right there by that post there would be the eastern, the eastern end of West Street, and it's, you can see it, a little bit of pink down there. So from there over to the sidewalk is where it runs through. You can see how they lined up the creek nicely to fit in there. And this is a little further down at Water Street, again, looking down West Street. And similarly, the aerial photo showing it, and as Mr. Shaw mentioned, I think to further support this realigned Westnidge might be a little historical thing for someone to figure out one day. If you're ever driving down Westnidge at North Street, you'll notice the road jogs, and then it jogs again at Level, which lines up with the edges of the plat. So again, that was something else staff thought showed that someone fixed something at some point. Here again is the zoning map, the current land use map, future land use map. And similarly, I'll try to go through these a little bit quicker. It is an unimproved street. The right-of, the, the public uses of this are not applicable. I would like to highlight again, obviously, you can see the trail runs through there, but that trail is under the easement. This doesn't impact that. So there's no impact to access to the right-of-way. It will not impede any adjacent property owner, because there's no change of property lines. Again, the DDA has access through their easement and frontage on Westnidge. CD Arena will have access to roads to the north, west, and south. The DDA provided there can support through a resolution on November 20th. They're the only two impacted property owners. And I will say once again, the property lines aren't intended to change. The current location of northwest Westnidge is known. It's 66 feet wide, so we're not taking anything from Westnidge either, and the surveys support that. It will not impact the city meeting its transportation goals. There's no impact. And the vacation will not impact planned utilities within the right-of-way. I will highlight again that Arcadia Creek does run under a portion of West Street and curves there along the alley, and the portions that do go onto the private property are contained within an easement. And the vacation will not impact or impede the work of the Public Safety or Public Services Department. And since these are already considered private parcels, they do not fall within that criteria.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Anything additional? No? All right. Then we will open the public hearing. Any members of the public want to comment on this item? And I should probably give a minute, but anybody online want to comment on this item? All right. Seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing. Any procedural questions or items on this? If not, we'll take a similar motion. Again, it's a recommendation to City Commission on the vacation of the unimproved West Street between Westnidge, or lying east of Westnidge, between Kalamazoo Avenue and Water Street.
I would move to recommend to the City Commission of the vacation.
Okay, we have a motion by Curtis. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Patelco. Any discussion on the motion?
I was very interested to learn in the existence of West Street. Never heard of it.
I think everything that was stated before probably holds true here. Again, it's consistent with the street vacation policy in our previous discussions, and appreciate the diligence that went into it. Seeing that, can we get a roll call vote?
Burgess?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Milliken?
Yes.
Patelco?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
All right. Great, thank you. Okay, moving on. PC 2024.03, a request for a special use permit by Kazoo School to develop a school at 2007 Saxonia Lane.
Thank you again, Chair Milliken. As mentioned, the request in front of you here is for a school use at the property. You can see here at this photograph, the property is addressed to Saxonia Lane. Also has frontage along Cherry Street, which is, it's a double frontage lot. So this, the house, it might be a little confusing about its location in a school, but that's a little bit of context I will go over. The photo here, again, is from Saxonia, and you can see the, a little bit of the house peeking through up there. The structure on the property, this is a photograph on the other side of the house in what would be the other front yard, as we call it, in zoning along Cherry Street. Looking back at it, the structure is a single-family home built in 1948, and in 2020, there were permits pulled for an addition on that home. The portion you saw in the first photograph was that addition to the property. It was around 19 or 2,200 square feet, and the addition with a basement brought it a little over 3,000 square feet in total. little over 3,000 square feet in total. And you can see there, the house is, still got house wrap on there. The permits were not closed and have since expired, but the dwelling is not occupied at this time, kind of just sitting there weather-tight, waiting for the next thing to happen to it, if you will. The applicant, if approved, would modify this existing building for a new use, which would be a school use. The applicant, Kazoo School, is located directly adjacent to the west of this property, where you'll see in some of the photographs, this almost makes their rectangle of property a little bit longer. And they, in the pre-application meeting, they provided a concept plan of how they would like to modify and incorporate it in the school. In that process, the building out of it for the classroom space or interpretive or storage space would go through site plan review and eventual permitting, so those outside changes. The property is in the RS5 Zone District and also within the natural feature protection overlay, the NFP overlay. So to put a little more context, I've got some more photographs here. Cherry Street is a dead-end road. It dead-ends at the east side. What you see on the, the left side of the picture there is the, one of the entrances to the parking lot for the Kazoo School. And to the right there is the driveway coming in off of Cherry Street, and it highlights the proximity of this building in relationship to the, the school property. We're looking westerly in this photograph. And that photo earlier of the back of the house, along the Cherry Street frontage, this is a photograph standing in the corner, looking back at the school, where you can see the context of this yard space. It lines up fairly nice with it, and that's looking to the east, to the side of the school. There were some comments received. You guys had, one of them was a, a letter provided to you that's on the dais there that references this driveway to Saxonia. The applicant proposes closing off this connection through it, recognizing the impact of a school on an otherwise dead-end residential property. So knowing that there might be some comments or thoughts about it, I wanted to make sure to provide a photo of that. You can see the, the structure up there on the right. Here's another photograph of the property on Saxonia, looking to the south. The road comes in off of Oakland Drive and ends in a cul-de-sac where this is. And going back to the other entrance of the property off of Cherry Street, this is standing just outside of their property line, looking directly east, and you can see the sidewalk, which is part of Cherry Street and the, the school right there. And that driveway, in a lot of sense, if you're driving down Cherry Street, you're going to go right into the driveway down the property. For a concept plan to show tentatively their, their plan there, this is a, a survey of the property. You can see how the structure is very well-centered on a large lot. The trees represent, you know, any potential screening or any additional buffer they may be subject to for their, there's residential houses to the north and south of the property. And they show a concept of, you know, a method that they would use to close off that driveway entrance. And even beyond that, this development would be subject to the city's site plan review process, where a lot more of the nitty-gritty details for access, screening, and those further, more detailed zoning changes would be evaluated. From formerly managing that process, I think there's a lot of room here to accommodate any standards that may come up through that process. So to help put it into the context, the aqua blue shows the parcel of the home. Right there, to the right of it, to the east, is 1401 Cherry Street. I mention that address a lot in the staff report. That's the existing Kazoo School, which also has a lot of programs tied to the big wooded area to the south there, which is the Kleinstuck Preserve. So a big part of their mission is, you know, highlighting the connection to nature and doing activities tied to the preserve. And you can see the, the rest of the area around the school is predominantly single-family homes, residential in nature. And that school itself has been there for 95 years, with Kazoo School being in existence for 37 or 38 years. I forget the exact number there. The current zoning, this property and everything, as far as you can see, is RS5. RS5 is the single-family zoning district. Again, this, this map does not show the NFP overlay. This parcel and some around it, due to the wood cover, I would guess, are within the NFP overlay. And the existing land uses reflects the zoning. You got some marked as vacant, and probably because it's a private school, the map picked it up as a commercial, but it is a, a school. And the future land use shows no changes really proposed here, outside of open space or preserve or park for Kleinstuck, which is that large square in the southeast portion of the map there. These are spelled out more thoroughly within your staff report. By the zoning ordinance, there's criteria that the Planning Commission uses to make their decision, and evaluating these, staff recommends approval of the special use, and I will walk through these criteria. That the proposed use is appropriate for its location. Staff believes that it is appropriate and compatible with the surrounding land area. While it is currently a residential house, it seems well-aligned with the school on a large property to buffer any additional capacity that, you know, children at certain times of the day and impacts of school use is going on there. The school has been there for 95 years in, in a capacity, so the traffic, the noise, the activities are a known quantity. Excuse me. And there is adequate separation, as mentioned. The special, the proposed use complies with Section 4.2, the U standards of the zoning ordinance. A school use has no specific standards, so this wasn't applicable in this case. The location and design of the proposed use minimizes adverse effects, including the visual impacts. The building itself will not be expanded, and in the staff report in the pre-application meeting, the applicant committed to their support to any zoning ordinance standards to put up additional screening to keep those neighboring houses screened or any lighting shielding in those nitty-gritty details. The proposed special use minimizes the environmental impacts and conforms to all environmental Similar to Item 3, the, the school, in a lot of ways, part of their mission in working with Kleinstuck, I've really picked up that sustainability, respect for the natural environment's a big part of it, and this is a beautiful wooded lot. So, and unless they really have to, they don't really intend on, you know, clear-cutting the parcel or doing any tree removal. And the parcel's also within the NFP overlay, which, you know, limits those impacts anyways. And based off of what they're showing, there is expected to be minimal impacts anyways. And the applicant intends to remove, again, the driveway off of Saxonia Lane. That there is adequate road capacity available to serve the special use. The school is not expanding. The school will be the same. They're, they're expanding onto the property and the dwelling, but again, this isn't anticipated to create a big rush of new students or more traffic. It's a known quantity to the neighborhood, and for nearly a century, the streets and network has been able to support the school. That the proposed special use is designed to ensure safe ingress and egress to the site. I've touched base enough on the, their plan to close off the Saxonia entrance so that you don't get students or parents or people showing up and cutting through there off of Oakland Drive if there's anything busy on Cherry Street. And their width of their connection along Cherry Street and the amount of frontage they have sharing with the school, if the Public Safety Department needs a little bit wider driveway, any connection that they may have to put in, such as they show a little bridge or a little pedestrian connection to the school, there's all the room in the world to accommodate that, and they plan on using that existing traffic area, the driveway in front for the vehicular and pedestrian connection. Excuse me. That there is addable, adequate potable water, wastewater, and emergency services to serve the special use. The dwelling is already hooked up to water and sewer. There's no planned changes to that, that capacity or to that plan, so that's a known quantity. And as the property goes through the site plan review process and permitting, the sanitary and water department do evaluate these. So if there was anything that needed to be adjusted, they would evaluate it through that. And there's plenty of room for connection between the school and this building. That the proposed special use is designed so that access to the site is provided for fire, police, and EMS services. The site has room to accommodate the access off of Cherry Street if they do close off that Saxonia entrance or through the school property. Staff believes that any potential concern, if the driveway was adequate for a single-family house, if they need to get ambulance or some sort of fire truck, you know, you've got room within the parking lot or room to even expand the driveway and parking area without even going out and taking out too many other trees is a, is a worst-case scenario, if you will. And number nine, that the proposed use complies with the standards in Chapter 6, General Development Standards, again, through the pre-application meeting and their staff report. Those are usually things such as the noise that you're creating, the buffers and screening from neighboring properties, lighting impacts. They, they've already committed to meeting those. They're well-aware of the city's development process, and those final details can be worked out through the plan review of, site plan review and building and permitting construction. And lastly, that the special use complies with all standards imposed on it and all other applicable provisions of this ordinance for use, layout, and general development characteristics. For the intent of requesting the special use to move forward, staff believes that they're, they've put together a plan to show that they can or will meet these standards and that this site has adequate capacity to line up with those on the other side of potentially converting the building to a school use. So, there's nothing further from the staff presentation on this one.
All right, thank you. Any technical or procedural questions for staff? Yes?
I do have a couple. In the write-up we were given, it says that KZ School is seeking to purchase the, the property, that they don't currently own it. Is it still under the previous ownership?
That is correct. The current property owner who owns the home, I believe they have a, a purchase agreement, but he did provide a letter acknowledging his consent to, for the school to move forward on this request.
Perfect. Other than that, you said there was recent addition and expansion to the property. When, what year was that again?
That permit was pulled in 2020.
2020?
The permit would have expired 12 or 18 months after that.
Do you know if there was any municipal requirements, whether it be zoning, natural features, or anything that they had to apply for, any procedures they had to go through for that work to take place back in 2020? Is any of that documented?
Yes, that's, that's a good question. When a building permit is applied for, there's a zoning review before the permit is issued. So the fact that the permit was issued, multiple inspections occurred, tells me at the time of application, it lined up with the zoning standards.
Okay. And then just to do due diligence, was there any sort of expression of interest in purchasing the property by KZ School prior to those expansions? I just want to cover our bases in case there was any sort of, oh, we wouldn't be able to get this done if it was a school, but while it's a house, let's make it bigger and then we'll sell it to the school. I want to make sure that was not the case.
Not that I'm aware of. It may be a question for the applicant, but I have no indication of such.
Just kind of procedural. If this is to be approved by us for the special exception, when it goes to site plan review, is it correct that it could be, the site plan could be approved conditionally with some changes, such as if they, if they wanted to require any buffering and things like that? Could, could a condition also be the permanent closing of the Saxonia entrance? Would that be something that could fall within that?
I, I would say the, the weight of a condition to close the driveway would be, there would be more weight behind the Planning Commission requesting that. Through site plan review, to get site plan approval, there's no conditions. So if there's a development criteria that you can't get to, the intent of the no conditions is to make sure everything's laid out and, and meets those standards. Something to consider with that, that could apply is, would the Public Safety Department, for some reason, request an emergency vehicle access only? That is a possibility, given the steep grade, thinking of a responding apparatus, they're probably going to respond from the facility over there on Howard directly. You know, it, it makes more sense. I, I don't anticipate that, but projects can't apply for site plan review if they need a, a board approval. But however, the Site Planner Review Committee could ask for that to be removed, and typically when we ask for something to be removed, it would be restoration of the full curb and complete removal of it from the right-of-way. Okay. Thank you.
I did think of one more question. You mentioned that it's in the NFP zone. Is there, do we know for sure exactly what features on the site led to its inclusion in that protection area, or was that not part of the research?
I would say, knowing that how the, the research was done, you know, evaluating aerials and, you know, some map analysis done by some city staff, the wood cover, I, I would guess it was picked up with the woodland, because you have the large chunk of Kleinstuck, and a number of the residential houses around Kleinstuck were picked up. And you can kind of tell where, you know, if you look at some of the covering, where there's big patches of tree cover, those are often picked up on the map.
That mostly on the south of the site.
Because when the overlay shows up, it really looks like a piecemeal, and that picks up slopes and trees. I would venture to say this was caught because of the woodland, when it was fully, if you probably couldn't even tell there was a house there.
Yeah. My only concern with the NFP would be, you talked about like, oh, if we need to increase capacity, be it for the school or for emergency access or something like that, we could just widen a driveway. I want to make sure that we're not promising something in the future that we can't get past NFP review of like, oh, no, that tree needs to stay. We can't widen this driveway. I don't want us kicking ourselves in the foot a little bit down the road.
Yeah, that, that's, I didn't get into that level of detail, but that's, that's a part of the consideration of it. There are, you know, trees of a certain size which are protected. However, you can plant replacement trees for it, and the parcel like this has a lot of room. And the percentage on a, on the woodland standard, if 80% of your property is woodland, you can remove all but X percent, which I believe gets you around 25% is what you could remove. You could remove everything but 25 or 40% by right, where even if the driveway had to be a little wider and a few trees were removed, there's nothing here to show that they're going to get close to impacting the woodland percentage either.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions at this time? All right. Is there anyone from the applicant that would like to speak?
My name is Jeff Swenterton, and with Christendery, and I have the privilege of representing the KZ School. Sanita Newberry here is the head of school, and we also have the vice head of the school, and we have all but two of the board members here, which is awesome. I think that, as, as Commissioner Curtis said, we are under contract with the owner of the property, Jacob Akert, to buy the property, subject to the approval, special use permit approval, and of course, site plan approval. And that's a big factor, as you, as you, as you mentioned. Even if the Planning Commission supports this, and I believe that of course it, or should, certainly tonight, we have to, we have to check all the boxes with, for site plan approval. I don't have much to add, frankly, to the staff report. Bobby outlined all of the, all of the factors here. I think the, certainly this checks all of the boxes. The only thing I would emphasize, there are a couple of things I would, I would emphasize with respect to this request. First is, as he said a number of times, it's a known quantity. First is, as he said a number of times, it's a known quantity. The KZU School has been, well, the, the, the property on Cherry Street has been a school for 95 years. It has been, the KZU School has purchased the property in 1985, so it's 38 years a school. So this is not a situation where a school wanted to form and says, let's find something in a residential neighborhood, one of Kalamazoo's wonderful residential neighborhoods and establish a school. As the staff report says, schools are generally compatible with residential property. But in this case, it's, it's a known quantity. Everyone knows what's going on. It's been a school for 50 years or for almost a century. So obviously, this is not a stretch. And this by itself is the most compelling reason to approve this. We're in the neighborhood. It's been part of the neighborhood. It's been compatible with the neighborhood, peaceful, seamless, the whole thing. The other factors, of course, that make this a compelling case, of course, is the fact that we are willing to close Saxonia Drive access. It is pretty steep. I was there Tuesday and it is pretty steep. And I think the Saxonia neighborhood is generally in support of this. And, but the one thing that was raised, I think it's fair to say, was the Saxonia Drive access, and they want sole access on Cherry Street. So that's what we're going to do. We will agree to that. That'll be part of our site plan. Whatever the city of Kalamazoo requires, we will do that because we want to, because it is better for the neighborhood and probably safer, everything else. Another compelling factor, as, as Bobby pointed out, is the fact that we're not doing anything, right? I mean, we're not expanding. We're taking that home, you see. That will be the school footprint. We're not covering the entire property, not putting driveways. We're not expanding, obviously, the school, the activities of the school, the hours of the school. This school, which is one of the best assets in the city of Kalamazoo, has this, even though it's a big building, everyone's on top of each other. We need the expansion. It's serendipitous that this property became available. It's, it's a, it's a perfect storm and it's wonderful. So we have this opportunity, but we want to be good neighbors. So we're not going to expand. We're not going to expand anything. It's not going to go all night. It's the same, it's the same thing just next door. And it'll be a seamless transition. And because we're using the same footprint and the same bones, obviously, it's not something that even the construction part will not even be an issue for the neighborhood. Speaking of the neighborhood, the, these two, the president and the vice president, walked down Saxonia Lane. And they covered all but one or two, two people. They covered all residences on foot to get the support for this because they realize what an, you know, we realize what an asset this is. But one of the things everyone looks for, include, you know, in addition to the letter that goes out, that we have a notice of hearing that's 300 feet, they went door to door. What an extraordinary effort and they should be, they should be applauded for that. And again, I hope there won't be any objections to this, either on the phone or here in person. And I don't suspect there will be, particularly because we are willing to close off Saxonia Lane. The support has been overwhelming in the neighborhood. And the other thing that we did mention in our, in our application is that the residences themselves are far apart. They're well separated. These are not homes, of course. This is a beautiful neighborhood that are on top of each other. So the school itself, right, is going to be, in most cases, hundreds of feet from the nearest residence. This is not, you know, these aren't row houses, obviously, or any, anything near that. So that also is an advantage and one of the reasons that it will not cause any additional burden to the neighborhood. And as Bobby says, we don't expect, obviously, any additional burden. It's a couple of classrooms, folks. It's not getting special burden with respect to utilities and EMS, fire, and infrastructure and roads and all that stuff. None of that will be affected. So I don't think, again, there's no disadvantage there. For all of those reasons, I hope that the planning commission sees that all the boxes are checked. Yes, we're going to have to get site plan approval. But this applicant, this is a, is a real asset to this community. This is a real reasonable request. Again, all the boxes are checked. The people here care, they'll work with the neighborhood. And we request that you approve the special use permit today to permit us. And by the way, we're going to, I want to meet next week. There's a pre-site plan approval meeting. We want to meet with the, Christina, we want to meet with the city. We're going to get moving on this thing. And we're going to hire an architect. We're going to hire professionals to make sure the school looks terrific, that it blends in with the current school, that it meets all the requirements that, that the city requires. And we're going to do this first class. Thank you very much.
While you're here, any questions for the applicant? I guess there's some language in here, but can you just describe how your plan to use the house?
Sanita Newberry, 5944 Seneca Way Drive. So right now, we are on top of each other because outdoor school is really important post-COVID. So we are committed to keeping our class sizes very, very small. And because of that, we've been very creative with our classroom spaces. And we have two of our math teachers here and they have math classes going on at the same time. One of our teachers teaches in a preschool room. That is, where the kids are outside. We're just on top of each other right now because we do have that commitment to small class sizes. So when we are able to move over into the house, we want to have like a common area and that would, like, we have something called SSR. So it's like a space where kids can, it's sustained silent reading, a space for them to do that when the weather is inclement. We also, it's like a big community room. We can have board meetings there. We can have that space open to the stewards of Kleinstock to use it. We're going to put a math room in there. Our poor math teachers are always looking for a place to teach math, which is hard, right? Because math is pretty fundamental. We have a tutor who works with kids with literacy, so she would move over there. Our art room would move over there. And our Spanish class would move over there and science. And the plan is that we would have a bridge that's kind of within our parking lot because during the day, we, we block off our parking lots. We do have classes outside in the parking lot because we're an outdoor school. And so that the parking lot is blocked off. The kids will be able to walk across the bridge, go to their classes, and walk back over. We're going to continue to have pickup and drop-off in the field where the, the kids are currently dropped off. So we don't anticipate anyone actually using the driveway of the Saxonia property because A, we want to be good neighbors and B, I, like the, the roundabout, not the terrible steep hill. Because we want to be good neighbors and there are neighbors directly across the way and that would not be very kind to them. Also, sometimes our parking lot is super full, so we'd like to have overflow faculty parking in that driveway. So that's, our hope is families will not suddenly see a new place to park their vehicle.
That's great. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, yep. And I have a question for you. As far as the student size, how many students would you be rotating, bringing back to that home for the school, for those classes? How many students come in?
So all students K through eight have art and Spanish three times a week. And then middle school students will have, they have science five days a week. And then they have math five days a week. So they would, you know, like will set up their schedules so that they're in, in that space, you know, for like a block and then walking back over. We also have four pavilions and we will still continue to use the pavilions for instruction. So the kids are very used to moving throughout the campus because sometimes there are math classes in a pavilion and it's all the way at the other end of the property.
And I'm sorry, how many kids, like?
How many?
How many would be coming to the class? How many would actually be physically in the home, like when you're doing those sessions?
So it really depends. So like some of the math classes are for students. Some are eight, some are 10. Our largest class is currently, I think, 14 students. Yeah. Right, 14? Bryn knows all of the admission stuff?
No, that's good. And then it was something mentioned about laundry. There was going to be a laundry facility there as well?
Yes, it has a full laundry hookup. And so we're an outdoor school and often teachers take the kids' muddy things to their home and wash them and it ruins our washers. And we're really excited about having a KZU School onsite washer. Nice. Thanks.
I'll take one more question. I'm just hearing a little ambiguity that I'd like to try to clarify a little bit about the driveway. I think I heard you say that you're not anticipating using the driveway. The, our, our planner's report referenced possibly closing it with rocks and logs, which could be seen as temporary. What is, are we talking about a permanent blocking off of that driveway entrance of Saxonia or a temporary thing that you may change later? What are you thinking there?
No, I think that's a good question. I think it's going to be a permanent blocking for school use. Now, again, as, as Bobby said, I suppose if there was an emergency vehicle thing or requirement by the city, right, that would be the only exception to that. How it gets blocked, et cetera, we don't have it determined that or I suppose that's a site plan issue. But no, it would be, as long as it's a school, it's going to be blocked. And we, the Imperial, we will not be using it for any school activities or any...
So it's...
Please.
Sorry. So the drive, there's a driveway on Cherry Street and that is a circular drive. And then there's like that driveway that goes down to Saxonia.
Yes.
So the hope is, if this all works out, right, is we have logs that kind of define different spaces in our school. So taking that log, it's consistent with the aesthetic of the rest of the school. And take, at that top spot before the big drop, putting the logs directly across that. And then at the bottom, putting up, you know, cones and making it very clear, like, do not drive here. So that is the plan. As we were walking around to the neighbors, they asked about putting in the curb. I was like, I have no idea about that process. We would love to explore that. But no, it's very, very steep. It's private property. I do not want to take on the liability of any, like, anyone driving down there. Eventually, I'd like to have steps because we do have folks that hike through there, like, you know, going to the Kleinstock. So it's many, many neighbors. And right now, they're walking down this very steep driveway. I would like to have steps in so that people can access that space safely.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. I understand.
I guess, and not to belabor the point, but have you done research on like easements or shared driveway that exists? Because I've run along that quite often and it has the feeling of a shared driveway. And so I just want to make sure, I don't want to raise any expectations with any commitment we make tonight that then can't be fulfilled.
Well, the, yes, here's what I do know. From the title work, Greg, the, the, there is a license to encroach. So that driveway is private property. So the owner of this property that we're purchasing has the right to use it. Okay? Presumably has a right to use it. But we're not going to exercise that right. Does the owner of the property, I don't, yeah, there's no other way to get there but through this property. So I don't think there's anyone else out there who has that. There's no other easements over this property.
Okay. So there's no other property owners that would be impacted, for lack of a better term?
No, 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 no. No, no, no. In other words, yeah. Who knows what somebody said to somebody or, hey, come and use it, you know, back in the past? I'm telling you, it's our property. There is no easement written document that gives anyone else in the neighborhood or anyone else in the world the right to use that. The only right to use it is under a license by us. And of course, we're going to voluntarily give up any right that we had and that'll go away.
Right. Okay. Good, thanks.
That's a good question, though.
Still me. All right. We'll let you sit down then. And we will open the public hearing. Again, if you'd like to make a comment on this, please come forward, state your name and address and you'll have three minutes to share your thoughts.
Hi, I'm Nina Fire. I live at 2002 Saxonia Lane, directly across the street from 2007. And when I bought that house 20 years ago, the woman across the street had just bought 2002 and had cut that driveway down. It was a Cherry Street house forever until the early 2000s, when this realtor who bought the house saw an opportunity to make more money selling it as a Saxonia Lane house rather than a Cherry Street house. And I sent all four of my children to KZU School. I have two grandsons at KZU School. It is a wonderful, wonderful school that cares about conservation, cares about the community, cares about education. It's, it's just a group of wonderful people and they're going to be great neighbors. I'm so excited that they could buy the school, I mean, buy the house and turn it into part of the school. And my only, the only thing I've heard from neighbors about the driveway is they're thrilled to have it blocked, but they hope they can use it for walking. So the stairs are a great idea because it is steep and awful. But I'm 100% behind KZU School buying this property. Thank you.
Hi. Thomas Whitner, 2020 Saxonia, Nina's neighbor, so I'm catty-corner to the, the house in question. I want to echo her comments about the KZU School. Fantastic neighbor, really happy to have them taking over this property. I bought, my family bought our current house at 2020 in 2020, which was an interesting coincidence. And so the house across the street has been under construction in one form or another for the entire time that I have owned my home. I am very excited for someone to finish it. And to finally have, you know, something other than house rap staring at me from across the, the, the street there. I am concerned, however, I have two small children, one very small, a four-month-old, and then a four-year-old who is just starting to ride her bike around the neighborhood. So obviously, the, the possibility, and I know we're looking to avoid this possibility, but the possibility of increased traffic is something that is high on my worry list. I want my daughter and I want the other kids in our neighborhood, we have some, some wonderful families in our neighborhood, to be able to use those streets at the same level of use that they have up to this point without worrying about the increased traffic that a school could bring. While blocking off the Saxonia side of that driveway, hopefully to allow us to still walk that, that loop. That would be fantastic. Steps, again, awesome. Would alleviate that drive-through concern. We've all had parents who park on the other side of the school and have their kids walk up and down the hill or something like that. If there's a way to alleviate that concern, that would be something that I and my family would be interested in. All in all, though, I'm really excited to have the KZU School as a neighbor. I think they're going to be a great addition to the, the neighborhood and to have that property completed is also something that I'm looking forward to. Thank you.
My name's Cheryl Bauer. I live at 2034 Saxonia with my wife Maria. We're next to Thomas and his wife and just on... We're next to Thomas and his wife and just on the street from Nina. I don't know if it's appropriate, but I have a couple of questions I'd like to voice that I didn't see answered in the presentation or in the application. It was great to meet the school administrators that came door-to-door. That was great. I was told at the time that this was a special use, one-time special use permit that went with this sale. If the property were to be sold again, the, the, it would revert back to residential. So I'm hoping I could get clarification on that. Second, like Thomas said, we bought the property, we've lived there for 25 years. It was a dead-end street. A big reason we moved there. It was really disappointing when um, as Nina said, a realtor came along, bought the property, put in a driveway trade to the address and um, uh, put it up for sale. It's a terrible driver, it's really steep. I'm concerned even if it's blocked off, the amount of traffic, like Thomas said. People come in and dropping their, their kids off and whatnot. It is a dead-end street for the most part with a driveway that uh, unfortunately, people get stuck in when they try to cut through sometime in the winter time. So I'm, I'm hoping for some clarification as to how that property would be used, even if there's steps for parents coming to dropping off their kids and picking them up. Those are my questions.
I'm Jonathan O'Brien. I own the property at 1933 Oakland Drive. I also own the property at 2003 Saxonia. And as you heard tonight um, from some of our neighbors, um, that there's this driveway that appeared in Saxonia. When we purchased our property in 2012 from the Lamberts, uh, what was discovered prior to close was that the previous owner of the Saxonia property had illegally or put in a driveway without notification over the 2003 Saxonia land. So the western edge of that driveway actually is under a license easement, um, as stated correctly. But that sale does require our consent to have that easement transferred to the new owner. So as I heard tonight about the concerns about the uh, the access through Saxonia through that driveway, um, I'm in full support of the school and, and what they're trying to do. But I thought I just would clarify a little bit that that western edge of that driveway actually is technically 2003 Saxonia property. And I'd hope that to the extent that the commission takes um, a positive vote on the use tonight, that that, it's just clear that that use permit does not extend to the easement property at 2003. And I look forward to working with the school on the final site plan to determine how best to close off that driveway.
I'm Bryn Wade. I'm the vice head of school, 8601 West H Avenue. Um, I wanted to talk about the drop-off procedure that people were concerned about. So we're an outdoor school and that's year-round. And our kids all have meeting spots on the field where they meet. And they actually stay outside for almost an entire hour, even in winter, before they go inside. And so um, we're really strict about, we send out diagrams about where you drive, where you stop. And those meeting spots are all on the Kazzu School field. That will not change. It's a system that we put in place during COVID and it has worked really well with the flow of traffic and also with um, where the different meeting spots are. So there would be no reason for any parent, they wouldn't be able to because we're really strict about where they're allowed to be. We also put in place um, safeties that are middle school safeties and they actually stop parents and say, so you can't park there. So you're not allowed to be there. It's really cute. But um, yeah, so we're, we're pretty strict. So when we see somebody breaking a law about where they're supposed to be stopping or breaking our rules on where you're supposed to be parking to be able to pick up or drop off, we make comments and work with our parents. So um, yeah, the pickup and drop off will continue to be on that field where it has always been. And if for some reason we had a parent get it into their head to go drop off on Saxonia, we would automatically tell them not to. And please tell us if that ever happens. Okay, thanks.
Hi, Rosemary Lannan, 2221 Treehaven Drive. I've been a teacher at Kazzu School for almost 30 years. And um, I wanted to say a couple of things. One, it was only um, maybe two or three months ago when we started talking about potentially buying this property, that I realized that there was a through driveway uh, to Saxonia Lane. So I've been driving from the Winchell neighborhood to Kazzu School for nearly 30 years. And then I found out there was this little spot that I could have been using all this time, apparently not. Um, and so I used it a couple of times. And then I got some feedback from the neighborhood that they were like, no, that's not cool. So while I was really excited to find a little wormhole from my house to my school, I guess my point is, I don't think anyone knows that it's there. I'm a pretty smart person and I drove to school for nearly 30 years before I even knew that that was a through street. I thought it was just a driveway. So I, I get, I understand the concerns and I, I'm not trying to make light of them. Uh, I'm just trying to say that I don't think very many of our parents, other than Nina, who lives at the other end of that driveway, um, even know that that's there. So hopefully that won't be an issue. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to say is that um, through the time that I've worked at Kazzu School, especially in recent years with our current administration, uh, we have worked very hard to be good neighbors to the Hillcrest neighborhood. Uh, we've worked really hard with the stewards of Kleinstock to take care of the nature preserve. Um, we, we have, you know, when we do a mum sale, we have leftover mums, we deliver them to our Hillcrest neighbors. My class delivered them in the fall. We put them on their porches. So we are very aware that we are a school in a neighborhood and that we are a school charged with taking good care of the Kleinstock Preserve and our neighbors. So that is foremost in most of what we do. So just, that's what I wanted to say.
Name is Seth Raymond, 2033 Saxonia Lane. So I had a lot of thoughts coming into tonight and I had the, actually the good fortune of meeting, meeting um, head of school and one other teacher as they did kind of their door-to-door. And I kind of anticipated the door-to-door initiative to kind of rally the troops and support. Very nice people. And so I would say that my opposition has nothing to do with um, how I feel about the school or the teachers. My opposition would have to do with the fact that when I bought a house there almost a decade ago, it was a residential street. The taxes that I pay, which are exorbitant, are on a residential street and that is now changing. Many different routes that I could go with my uh, you know, two minutes remaining here, but leadership changes, policies change, and, and teachers change. And I believe that the Kazzu School has good intentions as far as closing off the um, drive. But head of schools change and uh, I, I cannot, I, uh, so Nina, I believe, she's very lovely. I talked to her uh, two weeks ago. But what if the head of school changes? You know, what if, so just assurances that we want to, we hope to, we plan to, for me, aren't contractual and uh, they don't hold a lot of weight in the long run. And so I like the Kazzu School and the thought of them being on our street, while I don't love the fact that it's no longer technically a residential street, I would be in support of it if there were a curb. And um, basically just ground cover, forest ground cover at that place. Because despite good intentions, um, unless it's contractual, policies fail, uh, head of schools change. And if it remains um, just a couple of logs across with some cones, um, I'm very skeptical that it won't be used uh, in some fashion um, for pickup, drop off, people parking at the dead end there, walking up through and just including, increasing the traffic on that street. And I have young children who love playing on Saxonia. And I think regardless of any policies or governmental things that are put in place here, the, the street will absolutely change as a result of this becoming non-residential.
I'm Stacy Perriman-Clark, 7746 La Jessica Circle. I'm here to give some remarks on behalf of, as a member of the Board of Trustees and also a parent of an eighth grader who has been at Kazzu School since kindergarten. So while board, while heads of schools do change, we do have a governing body of a Board of Trustees who is responsible for all things fiduciary and whatnot. And so in terms of policies, we would, we work with any head of school to make sure that the policies that we put in place are ones that are sustainable. Um, I can speak from experience, as I said previously, my daughter started Kazzu School in kindergarten and now she's in eighth grade. And across my time being there as both a parent and a member of the Board of Trustees since 2016, I can say this, um, parking expectations and drop-off expectations have always remained consistent. My daughter is also one of those middle school kind of guards that makes sure and reports when folks aren't, um, driving in a way that is not safe. So we have done our due diligence. We have a consistent track record of making sure that the traffic remains as such and that there is safety and that um, our parents and our visitors use the appropriate means for um, parking. Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, is there anyone online? Oh, sorry. While you're queuing that up, sorry.
Thank you, good evening. Esther Volchuk, 2322 Glenwood Drive. I'm one of the parents and you met uh, two of my kids who go to Kazzu earlier tonight. I'm sorry about that. So we get frequent, frequent messages from the school about consideration to our neighbors. And I also have a four-year-old who loves to ride his bike. And I'm very cognizant of the concern that this parent has raised. It's an outdoor school. The kids are outside all the time. If it's legal for them to be outdoors, they're outdoors. And so whether I'm dropping off on time or sometimes a little bit late, we're always cognizant that there might be a ball going down the street, that there might be a child crossing who is also being dropped off. And all of the drop-offs happen in a very orderly and safety-conscious way. We all have kids who are outside. We want them to be safe. We want the neighbors to be safe. We get messages to make sure not to park in front of trashcans. We make, we get um, messages to make sure that we park in a way that is respectful to the neighbors on the street, not to block driveways. This is a concern of the school. And I don't see this as not being a concern of the school going forward. And while the heads of the school might change, the community does not change like that with one person leaving. And the entire community is invested in this area remaining the way it is, which is very sustainable, community-focused, and most of all, child-focused and child-safety-focused. Thank you.
Any other comments for the public? We'll come back.
I'm Shannon Winchester. I live at 1224 Merrill Street, Calm's Zoo, Michigan. I have been a parent at Kazzu School for eight years. The whole time I've noticed this driveway, it's terrible. I don't even know how it was produced to begin with. I don't know how the city allowed it to be a driveway. I believe that when they say they're going to close it, they will close it. I'm assuming that if somebody decides to make it more permanent, that would be a city issue and we can't just decide to build a curb. That's my guess. I know that we are very cognizant of the, our neighbors that we currently have. We try to work with them as much as possible. We have allowed them to use the property that we currently have for things that they would like to do. I also want to remind everybody that this building has been sitting here in disrepair and we're, and non, nobody's lived there for, for several years. The fact that it's just sitting empty, we know that how buildings go, they start getting worse. Wouldn't you rather have people using it, enjoying the space, kids learning more about uh, nature and having more space to learn rather than just having it sit empty? And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, is there anyone online who would like to speak?
Doesn't look like it.
No? Okay, well then we will close the public hearing. I know there was one question maybe city staff or the attorney's office can address, what happens if the property sells and there is a special use permit on the property?
Certainly. A, a temporary use permit is essentially allowing a use uh, that is considered to be compatible or allowable in a particular zone if certain conditions are met, which Bobby has outlined here. It is not temporary. Once a special use permit is granted, it is considered to run with the land. So that use then is allowed on that property. If that property is sold, that use follows the land. So um, there was a question, would it be possible that if it's sold, it converts back to residential? The short answer to that is no. Because that, once the temporary use is allowed, the special use permit is granted, then that runs with the land.
Can it be used as a house again in the future?
Oh, it could be, yes. Property owner could decide to uh, convert back to a residence.
But it's not mandatory is what you're saying? Yeah.
It cannot be made mandatory, no.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And there could be circumstances where maybe it's converted back, uh, the school moves, that maybe that temporary use, depending on the circumstances, could be considered abandoned. But otherwise, it can be used as a school.
But we're not, if, if this were to pass, we're not granting a special use for anything other than a school for this place, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right. Any other technical questions for the applicant or staff at this time?
I had one question for staff that they're able to answer. We had multiple comments about the road Saxonia itself. Do you know uh, what sort of stipulations are on that right-of-way? How wide it is, whether parking is allowed during certain times of day, never, always? What, what's the legality of parking on Saxonia currently?
That's a good question. I don't know exactly, but there's no signed rules. So like in the winter, if you're not allowed to park in the street, that, that would be your, whatever the general standards are on an unsigned street, that's probably applicable.
And I got a question for you. Um, when it comes to, like, they were talking about like blocking off the driveway and all that, um, that part, when it comes to like our city workers coming to like do plowing, do you foresee any issues with that? If like logs or come out or rocks or anything, do you see any issues with city? Because we still have city staff that comes down those roads.
Yep. It, no, if, if the driveway is shown to be removed um, through site plan review, um, removed is removed. I, I don't believe logs would be allowed. So if the driveway is removed, at least the portion within the right-of-way, um, something that would come up would be to demonstrate on the plan that you're going to remove and restore um, the road back to its original state. In the event if there is a need for... In the event if there is a need for an emergency access to be required, instead of logs, a gate with something called a Knox key would be required. A Knox key goes in a little vault and all the responding public safety personnel could unlock that key. Because if it's something for an emergency access, they don't want logs in the way. That's one of those technical details where, again, if it goes this way or that way, there's capacity to do either one. So that's how it would be looked at through that. And then as far as plowing it, yeah, if there was a driveway there, they wouldn't put the snow there, but the, call the sacks pretty wide. I think they got plenty of room to stack snow, I'm going to guess, since it's downhill there.
I'd step out in the hallway just briefly. I don't know if Bobby mentioned this, but if you do make the closing of that drive a condition, then that is part of the special use permit. So then if it would be opened again, there'd be a violation of the special use permit and it could be an action to close that off. So it's not technically a contractual condition, but it is a condition granting special use permit.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just wanted to make it clear to address that gentleman's concern that, you know, if this administration leaves, leaves in two years and there's a new administration and they say, hey, let's open this back up to vehicular traffic for ingress and egress over that Saxonia driveway, that's a no-go. It isn't permanent. It is contractual with the city of Kalamazoo. And if it were to be opened up or even attempted to be opened up, as Charlie said, there'd be a cause of action and that'd be a violation of the, of the special use permit if this body made it a condition.
Yeah, good, thank you.
A brief explanation on conditions, really what you're doing with conditions, you're imposing requirements that are intended to keep the project, in this case, the special use permit, consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. So that's essentially it, it does become a requirement.
Any other questions or comments at this moment? If not, I'll take a motion. We are the approving body in this case, so we'll take a motion to approve and then we can open up discussion. And this is approval of the special use permit by the Kazzu School to develop the school at 2007 Saxonia Lane.
I will make a motion that we approve the special use permit by Kazzu School to develop the school at 2007 Saxonia Lane with the condition that the driveway access to Saxonia Lane from 2007 is blocked permanently or discontinued.
All right, we have a motion with the condition. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Burgess, second by Chambers. Any discussion on the motion?
Well, I'd start with saying, setting aside the whole driveway issue, the case for the Kazzu School taking on and using this property and expanding the school is very strong. The staff report supports it as being appropriate in many ways. And it's a logical extension. It is appropriate for schools and residential districts as it already is. It meets the requirements and I am in favor.
I would tend to agree with everything that Burgess said. Now that we've included the condition for having the driveway closed, I think that it's important that we think about Saxonia Drive as akin to other nearby streets that aren't cherry that the school is currently on, where like any sort of change or increase or other change to the operations of the school would, could affect the surrounding areas and traffic in some way. But now that that driveway is stipulated to be closed and accessible to it, I feel like we should be comfortable considering Saxonia, even though it is the address of the property, to be just like any other surrounding road that could be affected by it, which seems reasonable given the requirements of the zoning code and everything. I've never seen more universal contempt for a driveway before, but seems reasonable in this case.
If I may. I would, I would add, I guess, that the reason for closing off the driveway should probably be stated and I would think that would be a safety issue primarily. And that's worth saying.
Good. Other comments?
The last thing that I'll say, I definitely agree with everyone here. The other thing that I would say, that it would be nice for the neighborhood to finally get that property back to something that looks more viable in that neighborhood. Because that neighborhood is very like natural, very friendly, family friendly in nature with kids. It'll be nice to see it all come back together versus just seeing that home with no, with no work done to it. Because I have seen that home, I have one by that area and it is an eyesore in that neighborhood. So it'll be nice to see someone actually take care of the property.
Any others? I agree, this is consistent with the special use standards. It's, the impact of the use itself will be minimal and a logical extension of the existing use in the community. My biggest concern with the closing of the driveway was if there were any other users of it or that this would impact others. And it seems like that is not the case. So I completely agree with closing it, especially considering the universal agreement with that. And it is a safety and a impact, an impact on adjacent neighbors issue. And so by doing that, we are fully consistent with the standards of the ordinance. See nothing else? Can we get a roll call vote?
Burgess?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Milliken?
Yes.
Patelco?
Yes.
Anne Pitts?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Then our last of the public hearings. PC 2024.04, a request for a special use permit at 2501 Milcork Street.
You're fine.
To develop a community service center.
Thought it was rather appropriate, this mystery, someone called it a wormhole or something when we had those first two come up about that driveway. All right, one more for tonight. The special use for a community service center use, kind of a weird term, but that's what it's called in the zoning ordinance at 2501 Milcork Street. Photograph there of the building, which was the former Kelsey Credit Union headquarters over there on the east side of Milcork Street in the Millwood neighborhood. So this property is, it's pretty isolated from, from a lot. In a few ways, it's pretty far out by Sprinkle and within industrial area with a number of retail service and industrial uses. So I focused most of my pictures from the street there. This is from the corner of the property at the, the south end, looking back towards that building. You can see there, there's an entry driveway, parking lot up front. There's additional parking in the rear. And if you can see in the other photos and the site plan documents, it had a drive-through off on the north side there. The property is currently vacant. A short time ago, Kelsey moved out of there and El Concilio is a neighborhood service organization in Kalamazoo, looking to expand their uses and facilities. I believe they've been looking for some time in this, this building. They have acquired and own and are seeking to do it there. The property is zoned M2, which is a manufacturing zone. So the use is listed as a special use there. Here again is the property on the opposite corner. This isn't the opposite corner of the property, but it's as far as you can get without standing out in the middle of the woods. The parcel itself is about 10 acres. And being a more contemporary development, you can see the, the lighting, the wide driveways, the stormwater infrastructure, a lot of components for heavy use office and drive-through. It's, it seems like a building well situated for the adaptive reuse. And to put a little more context into the location, here is from that same vantage point, looking to the north down Milcork. Milcork runs between Miller Road and Cork Street. The road itself is a three-lane road, fully curved and gutted, handles some of the larger trucks for some of the uses on there and delivery businesses. All of those woods you see there to the right side is, you know, little, it looks like half the property is wooded. And then turning back around, looking to the south, you see the building there and up on a hill to the right there are some buildings with a bunch of little individual tenants in there. Here is one of the pages from the, the site plan proposal that they have in there. The building is right there, centered on the right. The parking spaces there are pretty obvious and apparent. And the plan here, the applicant was wondering, you know, there's future phases. A lot of the outdoor stuff you see there is a down the road thing. The more immediate plans are on the north side of the building or to the, to our left is the drive-through, which is being shown, is converted to the outdoor area with a roof over it for a proposed accessory use, which would be a daycare. A daycare is a permitted accessory use in the M2 zone if it doesn't exceed 25% of the building area and they, they meet that standard. You can see some other site improvements to the, the catch basins there. They're going to modify, they propose to modify the entryway so it's one way in, one way out. The property has full 300, 360 degree access around all sides. And another element is this building is currently served by a fire suppression system. It has something called a standalone FDC. They're proposing to replace that main and put the FDC on the building, which is the preference of the city's public safety department. So it showed they put a lot of forethought in the modification on this plan. So while it was a full office use and I understand had a large storage area in the basement, held a lot of bank records probably before we went all digital, there was a lot of room in there for offices, classroom space and the accessory daycare. And some of those floor plans are provided within the, the staff report. So, you know, minimal changes to the site with the exception of the, the future phases, the soccer field and the little walking trail would involve, you know, some site clearing and prep, but overall still is a passive use of the land. While heavily wooded, it is not in the NFP overlays such as the, the last property was. And other elements in here is you can see along the east is an easement for a water main. And there's a big easement across the back, but I believe that's something about, it was a weird one. It wasn't, had something to do with stormwater, not for underground, but something about to make sure water doesn't leave someone's property. So that shows the, the full plan there and they've got a pretty well-developed set of plans of how they intend to move that. And similar to the last use, it would be subject to, to site plan review. And I believe they already have a date held to start that process. Similar to the other ones, put the property in context to its larger surrounding, it is at the edge of the M2 zone. Everything to the east is M1 and you can see the variety of large industrial properties around there. And then as you get to Miller Road there, up where it goes into the township is, is residential. And you can see how Milcork runs between Cork Street and Miller there. Here is the, the zoning of the map, showing it in that transition area over there by the railroad tracks are some heavier users, but still a great distance away that then transitions into this more passive light industrial uses than commercial once you get closer to, to Sprinkle. From there, here is the current land use. You can see a lot of the, while industrially zoned, a lot of the users are more commercial in nature. And another use to the north there is, is a church, but even that building is up closer to Miller, not really near this use. And where in some sense this use is less industrial or maybe a little bit of, they want, probably want a little bit of space from some of those neighboring potential industrial users, but at this time, there's not many industrial users creating a lot of emissions, if you will, or loud noises. And for the future land use map, you can see here too, consistent pretty much with the current zoning, this area is intended to remain manufacturing with the commercial remaining over there near the Sprinkle Road interchange. Going through the zoning ordinance criteria to evaluate as part of this request, is the proposed special use appropriate for, for the location? The, it is found to be compatible with the surrounding area in the sense that the, the building is well situated to accommodate this use. It does stand out a little bit in the area, which is more quieter in the sense that it's industrial, doesn't see a lot of traffic or Milcork doesn't even seem to see a lot of cut-through traffic. The parcel itself is nearly 10 acres, just under 10 acres, and that provides a separation not only from this use to the others, which is probably less of a concern of some of those trucking and shipping businesses, but also for the use itself if there were concerns about the industrial users impacting this use. So with the tree cover or even with the future soccer field, if it was developed, the removal of tree cover, they still have plenty of room to leave trees or provide any screening required by the ordinance. Number two, that the proposed special use complies with the U standards of the zoning ordinance. The applicant has already worked pretty far along with a local design professional and has provided a concept plan, has floor plans and is gearing up to go through our development process. The U standards include the accessory use, which is the daycare associated with this. And as I touched on earlier, the U standards require X amount of play area. It's 100 square feet for every child at average daily attendance and that it can't be more than 25% of the building area if it's in an industrial zone. That the location and design of the proposed use minimizes adverse impact impacts, including visual impacts on adjacent lands. Again, that existing tree cover and capacity to provide screening for the future phases for those outdoor areas exists, which again, will play both ways to screen the property. And then, again, that's as it is now, even before those future ones, it's within its own property, isolated pretty well. The proposed special use minimizes environmental impacts and conforms to environmental regulations and standards. Noting the parking lot improvements, probably when you get out there, it's pretty broken up, the water might not flow in the right spots. Shows that they are already thinking ahead to those changes to keep the, the water on the property and the office, community service center, daycare use, there isn't anticipated to be any large chemical storage or loud noises. So those are all considered to be pretty minimal for this use. That there is adequate road capacity to serve the proposed use. I would venture to guess that the former use probably required more parking and activity than this new, new one. Milcork is a three-lane road, fully curved and gutted, handles a lot of large truck traffic. So this community service center use, even if there is events that attract people, you know, for the outdoor events, there's plenty of capacity through Milcork. And then you've got two main roads, Miller and Cork, to handle traffic and get you to the freeway pretty quick. And it is worth noting, you know, while there is good road access, Milcork itself does not have any pedestrian sidewalks, but that's the case for the stretch of road. Number six, that the proposed special use is designed to provide safe ingress and egress. Similar to the parking lot notes, they show a little bit of modification at the ends there. They're currently both two-way and I, it's viewed that it's, staff use it as a simplification for one way in, one way out. And the internal parking lot network makes it really easy to get around and for responding vehicles if the need arises. That there's adequate potable water, wastewater and emergency services. That there's adequate potable water, wastewater, and emergency services to serve the special use. Looks like I copied the wrong thing there. This, as noted, they will have the, they're going to replace the water main, so the building already is sprinkled, so it has the capacity to serve it, already has sewer service. That the proposed use is designed so that access is provided for fire, police, and EMS services. Because of the two existing wide driveways, and the fact they'll be one-way in, one-way out, again, this property has plenty to, plenty of room to service it. And relocated FDC, as mentioned earlier, is a preference of the public safety department. And another one of the requirements that come up with those is, there's a 100-foot distance to a fire hydrant. Imagine you're responding to a fire, the FDC is charged by the city water system, so the nearest hydrant is all the way down by the road. So staff uses this as a definite improvement, not only are they going to get the improved FDC connection, but they're also going to have a hydrant real close, so if worst-case scenario happens, they can respond pretty quick. Number nine, that the proposed special use complies with the standards in Chapter Six. Those were touched on a little bit earlier. More tied to the accessory use that they demonstrate meeting, and site enhancements that they show already appear to line up with it, and any little details that need to be worked out could be modified in site plan review. In this one, I would anticipate landscaping in the front, and the lighting might already comply, but the lighting changes are demonstrated in that plan. And lastly, that the proposed special use complies with all the standards imposed by it, by all applicable provisions of the ordinance for use, layout, and general development characteristics. The special use does meet, or has the room to modify, and the proposals as shown in site plan review can be evaluated to make sure they button up and meet all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance. But from the review, looking at it through the special use permit process, it's pretty much there along the way, or some of the things that tend to come up in that review process, they've, with their design professional, have really given these considerations. So with that, staff is supportive of the request.
Great, thank you. Any technical questions for staff at this time?
Only question I had is, with it being a manufacturing zone property, is there any knowledge that staff would have of it previously being used for manufacturing uses that may have introduced pollutants or anything to the soil, or stuff that might be started to be used for public recreation?
Great question. There's two parts to that. I know that the applicant has had environmental due diligence and research on it, and I believe that their design professional's already, early on, contacted the environmental reviewer from site plan review, but through that same review, review of those documents is conducted to identify those. Oftentimes, a Phase One or Phase Two involves a very deep historical research, and those are evaluated and requested. And in the event there is something there, we've encountered a lot of different situations in the city, we usually figure out what, if anything, needs to be modified. But my general knowledge of the site was, I don't know that this was developed before this building. Sometimes in this part of town, what you encounter is, somebody dumped some concrete or construction material before that area really started to develop.
Any other technical questions? Okay. Does the applicant have anything to share? Thanks for waiting it out.
Yeah, no problem. Danielle Rhodes, civil engineer with Avon Marsh Bice. I got to thank Bobby for a very thorough summary, I don't have a whole lot to add to that, but I would welcome any questions at this time. I also have project architect in the field here who waited it out, so he's also well-versed on the project, as far as interior spaces goes, that may play into some of your questions as well.
Any questions for the applicant? No? All right, well, if we have any, we'll let you know. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. I don't know if there's any public comments in the audience, but we'll give it just a beat to see if there's anybody online.
No, don't see anyone.
Nope, all right. And we will close the public hearing. Any other technical questions, or anything? If not, I will look for a motion to approve the special use permit at 2501 Milcork Street to develop a community service center.
All right, I will move that we approve the special use permits to develop a community center.
All right, motion by Patelco, is there a second?
Support.
Second by Pitts. And do we have discussion on the motion?
No, I'll just say it looks like a really solid plan, and it's good to see a property getting utilized in such a way, and we could always use more childcare preschool in this county, so it's very encouraging. The only concern I had was already asked about any sort of previous industrial uses or contamination, but, you know, I would imagine it had to have been remediated somewhat to build the facility in the first place. So I think this is a great use.
Any other discussion?
I would agree with everything that's been said, and looking at the criteria to evaluate against the zoning code and special use permits in general, the intent in most cases is to protect the surrounding properties from a special use, and it seems to be in this case, as Bobby stated, that's more protecting this use from surrounding properties. So if it's being brought to us by the owners of the property, it's, the current uses are much more commercial than you would expect in a normal manufacturing district, it seems to be more in line with the surrounding area than the zoning it is assigned would presume.
Yeah, that's right. In many ways, manufacturing doesn't really mean manufacturing in the historical sense, it just means a broader diversity of potential uses. And this one is clearly a special use identified in that district, it meets the standards for approval of a special use, as stated in the ordinance. So I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Burgess?
Yes.
Chambers? Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Milliken?
Yes.
Patelco?
Yes.
Ann Pitts?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you very much. All right. Any other discussion or action items?
None.
Nope, all right, city planner report?
No city planner report today.
Oh, man. Okay. We have the site plan list there, any questions on that, or comments? Seeing none, we are at public comments on non-agenda items. Seeing nobody in the audience, is there anyone online that would like to make public comments on non-agenda items? While we're waiting, I'll note that City Commissioner Pradel is not here, so we will not hear from him in the next item. Be thinking of your own comments.
Doesn't look like there are any.
No, okay. So moving on from city, did you get any notes or any city commissioner things we need to share?
No, I did not.
All right, planning commissioner comments? Any planning commissioner comments? Resolutions, nothing? My only question was, I read something that the city commission has decided to, at some point, like March or something, to forgo the phone-in comments. Is that something that they decided on their own, is that a city-wide policy? What's the, I guess?
I wish I could say I'm a little, I was a little better-versed in that, but I do know that that decision applies to the city commission, it is not blanket to all boards.
That might be something, maybe internally, if, before our next meeting, if it is something that should apply universally, or should not, it's, I guess, as chair here, I'm a little confused, like, should we be thinking about that? Should we not be thinking about that? If the city commission's no longer taking call-in, how are we, what's the direction for us? And I don't know if you guys have thoughts on it, or if you don't have thoughts on it.
My only thought on it would be that it shouldn't be decided outside of a meeting, it should probably be decided in a meeting.
Yes, we definitely need to talk about it, and that's why, for sure, but I'm interested in what the, I mean, I've, I think, hey, there's pros and cons, right? I think it's great that it's been an opportunity for people to engage and participate, it has been a huge distraction, and a technological, like, problem in certain meetings as well. And so, you know, how we weigh that, and obviously, the city commission weighed it and decided, we're done with it. And so I guess I'd be, maybe in the next time Commissioner Pradel is here, we can ask him, okay, what went into that decision? Maybe that's the best way we need to handle this. Okay, that's what we'll do. All right. Other than that, any other commissioner comments? If not, our agenda is exhausted. Welcome to 2024, thank you everybody, word earned.